August 31st, 2009. I'm going to ask if there's any questions or comments with regard to the minutes, and I understand that the clerk has some comments with respect to the minutes.
There's a correction that's going to be made on one of the motions. Counselor Wing pointed out that she did not move the motion, so we'll go back and review the tape. But I'm confident the rest of the minutes are perfect.
So, Mr. clerk? So, we can pass the...
Has amended.
Has amended?
Yes.
Moved by Counselor Maves, seconded by Counselor Carrio. Any further discussion? Having seen none, all is in favor. Motion is carried. Thank you. This time, I'm going to ask for any disclosures of any community interest by any members of council. Counselor Wing?
Yes, from the consent agenda. Report PD 2009 66. Involves embassy suites. It's my husband's voice of employment.
So noted. Counselor Thompson?
Yes, PD 2009 66. Same conflict.
Are there any others? Having seen none, we'll proceed on. This time, I'd like to introduce our first deputation. We're going to be discussing the Alzheimer Coffee Break, and we have with us the Director of Development for the Alzheimer Society, Ms. Tina Kint. Welcome, Tina. Please come forward.
Mayor Salsey, member of council, city staff, and members of the general public. My name is Tina Kint, and I'm the CEO of the Alzheimer Society Niagara Region and Alzheimer Foundation. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you about our 14th Annual Coffee Break campaign. Alzheimer's disease is a progressive, degenerative brain disease that causes brain cells to shrink or disappear. The cells are replaced by dense spots called plaques and thread-like tangles. These tangles eventually choke the healthy brain cells, making simple activities of daily living a challenge. We know that there are approximately 500,000 Canadians that are living with Alzheimer's disease or related dementia. More than 71,000 of these individuals are under the age of 65. We also know that 1 in 11 people over age 65 currently battle the disease, and that women make up 72 percent of those affected. In the next five years, an additional 250,000 Canadians could develop Alzheimer's disease or related dementia. In Niagara, there are 7,700 people who have been diagnosed. Niagara is a retirement community and has one of the largest senior populations in Canada, and yet there is a lack of available geriatric services in comparison to other communities. More people are coming forward early with Alzheimer's disease or related dementia. However, there are few programs that meet the needs of these individuals in the early stages. They are not impaired enough for existing programs geared to the later stages, but they are certainly not comfortable attending activities offered at senior centers due to their memory problems. We at the Alzheimer's Society provide opportunities for socialization and interaction with their own peers, who can fully understand their experience and difficulties with memory. The Alzheimer's Society has been committed to improving the quality of life with people with Alzheimer's disease and related dementia and their caregivers for close to 25 years, and we really are making a difference. We help keep individuals in their homes, on average, a year and a half longer, which is reducing the burden on acute care services. We provide assessments, individual and family counseling, coping strategies, behavior interventions, education, and information regarding assessable resources. This is further accomplished through our lending library, our assistive device program, support groups, and programs offered by the Therapeutic Living Center and Caregiver Cafe. We also encourage and provide information on keeping a healthy brain. We know that healthy heart through exercise, a healthy diet that includes omega-3 and omega-6 fatty acids, and stress management can enhance brain health. We also are very optimistic that a cure is in the foreseeable future. Each year, the Alzheimer Society Niagara Foundation must raise approximately 35 percent of a $1.7 million budget in order to continue providing these vital programs and services. Coffee Break is our signature event, and the idea is to make your coffee count. This concept was inspired by two of our very own counselors during a conference in Scotland. They were introduced to a tea break, and as we all know how Canadians love our coffee, that's where Coffee Break originated. Our vision has evolved into a national fundraiser for Alzheimer's societies across Canada and has raised millions of dollars. On September 17th, National Coffee Break Day, it is estimated that over 10,000 Coffee Breaks will take place across Canada, raising funds and awareness for Alzheimer's disease and related dementias. An Alzheimer Coffee Break is a time when you can invite your coworkers, clients, friends or neighbors to enjoy a cup of coffee or another beverage at a break time or a specific get-together, then you simply ask them to make a donation. It's fun and social and very easy to organize. The society supplies the kit, and the host supplies the people. A kit includes your first pot of coffee, a donation box, and promotional signs and literature. This year's honorary chair is Ann Radicek, owner of the Two Harveys Restaurants here in Niagara Falls. Ann will be kicking this campaign off on September 17th at her two restaurants located at Lundy's Lane and Montrose Road, starting at 10:30 a.m. If you're in the area, we invite you to stop by and enjoy raffle prizes and discount food items. While many Alzheimer Coffee Breaks in Canada will be held on the national day, you can certainly choose a date that is closer and more convenient to you. It is also not limited to a Coffee Break. Some of the most successful events in the past have involved doing something a little different. I know that you, Mayor Salsey, hosted a very successful breakfast last year. Many organizations host open houses, barbecues, raffles, dress-down days, and sell coffee cup cutouts. You can even do a virtual Coffee Break and simply email your friends, coworkers, and family to donate online. Our goal this year is to raise $90,000, and all funds raised stay in the region here to benefit our families and neighbors. Last year, thanks to yourselves and over 300 hosts, we raised $75,000. With your assistance, we can reach our goal and continue to provide hope for today and -- or help for today, hope for tomorrow. Anyone can register by simply calling the Alzheimer Society at 905-687-3914 or visiting our website, AlzheimerNiagara.ca. I would also like to take this opportunity to invite everyone to join the Alzheimer Society of Niagara and the Alzheimer Society of Western New York in celebrating World Alzheimer Day on Sunday, September 20th, which is the eve of World Alzheimer Day. We will be first hosting a celebration at the Bird Kingdom, starting at 7:00 p.m., then making our way to the Rainbow Bridge, where we will be joined by our American counterparts, and we'll be spanning the bridge with a human chain. The lights in the falls will be illuminated in each of our branded colors. We are very excited about this international event because it will recognize and honor all those who have experienced dementia and those who care for them. So, we welcome everyone, and I know also, Mayor, you're coming to join us that evening, so we truly do appreciate everyone's support. And I thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening about our Coffee Break and our programs, and I have your Coffee Break kit.
Thank you, Tina. Are there any questions of Tina this evening? I'd just like to advise Tina and the members watching, actually, members present and those watching from home, that our event is going to be a lunch on the 25th of September, right here at Civic Square, so we look forward to having those who are in the downtown core participate with us, along with the staff at City Hall. So, again, we'll have a lunch that we'll host, and we'll turn it a little bit better. We actually can organize it probably easier than a Coffee Break here at City Hall, so we'll do that, and we'll let you know of the success we had.
Fabulous.
Thank you so much.
Is that you? Your kit?
The next deputation this evening is from Mr. Alister Davis, the Chief Executive Officer, who is from Habitat for Humanity, who's going to make a PowerPoint presentation with regard to the mission of Habitat for our council here this evening. So, welcome, Alister.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mayor, council, and staff for making it possible for Habitat to make this presentation this evening. My role as the CEO of Habitat for Humanity since 2006 has been to break the cycle of poverty in Niagara, and there's plenty of work for us to do, and I know it's the interest of each of you in trying to solve that crisis that we have of affordable housing. Part of what I just want to highlight this evening is that we have such a problem, and 14 percent of our residents, at least that many, are living in poverty. And, of course, that many children or more particularly feel the brunt of living in those circumstances. So, we are finding in our work with Habitat, so many families that are living in housing that's not affordable to them, they're overcrowded, it's substandard, they're paying an amazingly disproportionate amount of their total income just to cover their housing costs. So, there just isn't enough to go around. We also have situations where a combination of all three of these sometimes are present in one household. So, our program is to -- whoops. Not play with the PowerPoint buttons too quickly. It's to recognize all of us that there's over 5,000 families waiting for an affordable house, and some of them have been waiting for eight years for a place that they just want to call home. And we think that we have a way that we have proven that breaks that cycle of poverty. And what we do in Habitat is we build safe, they're decent, and they're affordable homes. And how we're able to do that is partnering with the community. And really, the goal and mission of me speaking with you tonight is to invite the city of Niagara Falls and the communities and the service clubs, faith groups, et cetera, within your city, to work with Habitat to provide to these families a hand-up, not a handout. We've constructed 29 homes in Niagara, and we do that with each and every family, providing them with a hand-up. It's not a giveaway. In fact, today, we started home number 30 in St. Catherine's. So, 7:30 this morning, excavation was underway. As far as our internationalism, we build in 90 different countries, and we've built over 300,000 homes. It's our work towards solving that problem. The actual mission of Habitat internationally is to eradicate poverty housing in the world. Family selection process is often something that is of great interest in terms of how do we pick the families when there's so many? And the three major criteria that we use is that there is a need for affordable home. And we have volunteer committees that report to me, and we run information sessions. So, if we were to start building in Niagara Falls, we would run an open forum, inviting families to come in to hear a presentation by our volunteer committee, family selection committee, which they explain somewhat of what I'm doing tonight, but a lot more detail about what's required to qualify for a home, exploring how much they're paying criminally for a home, what the living circumstances are, number of children, number of bedrooms, what's the community like, family safety. They also, because we do not give away the house, have to have the ability to pay. And we do offer a mortgage, which is at 0 percent, which we find to be very competitive. We don't have anyone else out in the market that's trying to jump in where we are. There's no down payment, and there's no profit. And what we ask the family to do in terms of what they provide is they provide 500 hours of sweat equity. And that's the work they put back into working on either their home or a combination of working with other not-for-profits and giving in the community. The payments are geared to income, and we're basically looking for a family to provide 25 percent of their gross income, the principal and property taxes. And Habitat remits the property taxes, so there's never any question in terms of will the taxes be paid. This is a page which really shows sort of in one -- if I had one page to you work with tonight, it would be this one. This is what we've determined to be our formula for success, and really the focus of the challenges and the opportunities we have. On the left side, you see the tree and the land, and that's sort of our first starting point. To transform a family's life, the first thing we have to do is get the land. And that is quite a challenge, but in Habitat, it's three words. Land is everything. And once you have the land, the whole sort of magic of the build and involvement of the community takes place. The handshake is we need community partners, community partners like the service clubs, Rotary Clubs, Lions Clubs, the city of Niagara Falls, and many other groups that partner with us. And we need approximately, in terms of the checkbook, not including the land, about $60,000. We can build a three-bedroom house, everything's brand-new, four appliances, and a house totally ready, sawed, everything. Of course, the family, that's the selection process that we talked about. We would conduct a specific family selection process in Niagara Falls. And at the very end, then we have the house, and the reason we have the green leaf in there is that we are now building all of our homes, we're a certified Energy Star home builder. And the reason we went to that standard is that we want to be sure that affordability of these homes was sustainable for families and that they were able to continue to pay for the utilities and operating the home. So, these are the steps in terms of we need the land, the partnerships, cash, the family, the house. And we are very pleased to have an incredible partnership with the District School Board of Niagara, and which we have built with them since 2005 through their Specialist High Skills Major Program. They participate exactly in building the house. It's been built into the Ministry of Education's curriculum. They have their own supervisor, and they build that home from start to finish. It's quite an amazing experience, and the students start their apprenticeship program as part of this role. To acquire the land, I seek all different sources, but I'm always basically exclusively looking for the affordable, donated, or Alister's Habitat favorable price, which is way below the fair market value, and it's really more of a token type of price for land. Otherwise, I would be raising twice as much money to be able to build a house, so I really do try to get the land donated or very close to it. We're looking for land that's property-zoned, services provided to the property line, and that we will fit in to the surrounding community and area. And we invite the city's involvement, as we would hope that you may be able to help us with the land, and also to be able to help us with the services and that type of thing that's required to ensure we can build a home that's affordable. So, the type of community partners that we often are championing with are such as Rotary. We're working with Rotary in just about every community we build in, the Lions, Chamber of Commerce, businesses. Of course, the District School Board with Niagara College, their architecture program participates in helping us design the homes with various skilled trades and with extensive gift and kind that we receive in building materials and supplies and services locally, and also some that are provided through a national program offered by Habitat Canada. It's pretty amazing what we can do with the -- when we can get the land and the cash. For approximately $60,000, not including the land, we can build a house. So, we're basically able to leverage that money, you know, about two to two and a half times. And that involves the advantage of the gift and kind, fees being waived, land being donated, and the fact that, you know, just about all of the costs for the house, that's labor, is volunteered. Actual building of the home and the family partnership, we've gone through the whole matter of the qualification and selection, the sweat equity. Moving into homeownership, we have another committee that works with the families to provide them with training, what it means to become a homeowner, because for many families, they have never lived as a child or any point in their life in a home in which they had that responsibility. So, we work in many ways with them, from budgeting through to basic home maintenance and what to do in the winter and what to do in the spring to properly maintain your As to the house design, it's something that has to fit to the land and the area, and also, when necessary, fit to the family. May it be the size of the family, or if there's certain disabilities we have to attend to. Our homes are all built with brick fronting and very tastefully designed. Our desire is to build a home which is very welcoming and a proper fit to the community they're building in. Our homes are all Terran warranty, and as I mentioned, they're Energy Star certified. Not only is that fantastic for the families, we can imagine for the students, they are learning to build a house to a level that is higher than the current Ontario Building Before I went for my first interview for this job, I wanted to have some tangible results to really believe that I was going for the right mission to become involved in, which I've been doing for the last four years. This data right here is the one that really struck me as being, you know, something I put my hands on, other than just my heart and passion. What I really learned from a survey done by Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation of all Habitat families is that we found out that over a third of the families were less reliant or not reliant at all on social assistance. About a quarter of them were going back, the parents were going back to school correspondingly. About 30 percent moved on to better jobs as a result of better education. And the one that really matters, really goes to the heart, is over 50 percent noticed improvement in their child behavior. This is noted both at the school level and the parents, and also about 40 percent showed not just improvement, but remarkable improvement in their children's school grades. And we think that's really because of the stability that you have when you have a place to call home. We are talking with some families in which they have six, seven-year-old kids, and they've been in six to seven, if not eight, different places that they've lived in. So, a chance to have home is a really big item for them. Our home-building partnership with the District School Board involves about 20 students. They work every day, eight to three, for a full semester. Their classroom every day for that semester is the build site. It's their living classroom, their internship program. So, the impact that we have working in communities, not only with the family, but also we've become part of a career journey for the 20-some students. So, what we have right now is a chance to transform people's lives, and that's what I invite the city of Niagara Falls to become involved with Habitat and to assist us in transforming lives here in Niagara Falls to get underway with building a home. The -- back there. The one thing that we do have at this time is the partnership with the school board, which is why the check mark on the far-right-hand side to build the home. We have the home design program already put together, and we would really like to be able to put those other components from left to right into place. We have talked with some of the service clubs who are showing an interest, and we certainly hope that the city is interested in continuing to see a way to partner with us. In terms of the role that Habitat provides, we do all the project management, we design the homes, we seek all the permits, the project accounting, the provision and procurement of product and gift and kind. As a charitable organization, we issue charitable tax receipts, and we do all the marketing and publications and media work that's required in conjunction with our community partners. In terms of who those different partners may be, we hope that one of the top ones is yourself, the city of Niagara Falls, school board, and other groups, businesses. We're very involved with the different faith community groups, service clubs, chamber, emergency services, partners just like everybody else that's here in the city that's interested in improving the availability of affordable housing. As to the local benefits, we break that cycle of poverty right here, one family at a time. We provide an Energy Star home that's purchased by a deserving family, and you will experience, as we have seen throughout Niagara, a transformation and a change that takes place that's quite exponential. It isn't just the family, it's everybody that gets involved. Whether you get involved from a distance, in terms of making decisions to support this program and help us find land and help us with service costs, to churches and restaurants to provide meals every day for the families, you get involved, you'll feel very different. Also, the local merchants are supported. We buy as much as we possibly can right here in the community and certainly in Niagara, and we have an extensive donor recognition program that we provide onsite and beyond that. So, ways in which to partner with us is to donate or sell land to us, to waive or development and build fees, select us as your charity of choice, and continue to be, as I know each of you are, as advocates for affordable housing in Niagara Falls and in the region. So, these are some actual live pictures of difference that we can make for a family. These are pictures from this year of people that have moved into homes in Port Colborne and Welland, and yes, that's the two cities these pictures are from. And I hope you get a chance, if you haven't, to come to a home dedication, because it is one of the most incredible experiences to see the impact you can have in changing people's lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Davis. Are there any questions, Alister, that council may have? Well, thank you for your presentation again this evening.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, Your Worship, I wouldn't want the Speaker going away thinking that, I guess, we don't support affordable housing. Just so that the Speaker knows, recently, the city of Niagara Falls did donate a building lot to, I guess, a couple in our community who were moving a home from one location to another location, and so we did donate the lot so that the home could be placed on there.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation this evening. Thank you.
Members of council, I have a few comments this evening. I'd like to note some passings, if I may. I'd like to extend our condolences to the family of retired fire prevention officer Gary Rogers and the passing of his mother, Mrs. Jean Rogers, and to the family of Danny Daddio. Recently, of course, you've read in the media about his tragic death, and we've been informed about his prowess in running and cycling, and however, there's certainly the business side of Danny, whom many knew as the owner of Maple Leaf Collision Service, his responsibilities as well as a founding member and president of the Niagara Resort and Tourism Association, which was a precursor, as you know, to the current Niagara Falls tourism, and may not be as well-known. He recognized the need for tourism association to actually unification, and as his business and his commitment to fitness, he did whatever he thought was necessary with total purpose and dedication, so he certainly worked towards the betterment of the tourism community as well at that time. Counselor Thompson actually presented an excellent eulogy after the mass on Saturday, and I want to acknowledge counsel for his excellent work in doing so. He knew Dan extremely well. We certainly will miss him. He's a very, very committed individual in our community, and again, our condolences go to his family. I'd like to as well thank Counselor Peter Angelo for representing counsel at this weekend's Terry Fox Run. I'd like to also acknowledge and congratulate Les Potobsek, Joshua Lennox, and their incredible team of volunteers for once again organizing and hosting this event. The number of participants and the great weather was equal $23,000 raised at Oaks Park, and a silent auction, of course, held at Rona Far Lumber yielded an additional $4,000. You may be aware that it was held a week early this year because of the conflicting Jewish holiday coming up this weekend. But once again, Niagara Falls has demonstrated its commitment and generosity to this great event. I'm pleased to advise as well that the Go service continues to be a positive addition. The most recent figures we have to date show 27 operational days, and at this point, we're still -- we exceed 37,847 travelers and with an average of over 1,400 people per day. So, it still maintains a fairly constant travel on weekends by Go train. As you're aware as well, Niagara Falls was pleased to welcome the Prime Minister to our city, where we had the opportunity to tour the Niagara Convention Civic Center project site. I was invited by our Member of Parliament, Rob Nicholson, to join and also to attend a press conference at the Lewiston-Queenston Bridge thereafter. And late last week, actually on Thursday, I had the pleasure of meeting a delegation from Shenzhen, 1,000 Islands Lake area of China, I should say, who were visiting Niagara Falls before attending an event at the Thousand Islands in Leeds, where they celebrated the signing of a new agreement of friendship and cooperation between Ontario's Thousand Islands and the Chunan County's Thousand Islands Lake. I was invited to attend this ceremony where I had the opportunity to meet with the Chinese Ambassador to Canada, the Council General of the People's Republic of China to Toronto, and Minister Michael Chan, our Minister of Citizen and Immigration. And once again, I did have the opportunity to discuss counsel's concern about the matter of the approved destination status for our country and voice our concerns. And Counselor Carrio has been a strong advocate of this initiative as well. It will mean certainly a lot to us and our local economy in having Chinese have the freedom of visiting our country and our city. So, once again, we will keep your prize of our progress in that regard. This concludes my remarks for this evening. Move on to the next item. Yes, Counselor Thompson?
Yes, I think it's probably appropriate that you make a couple or three remarks. And thank you for bringing up the passing of Dan Daddio. As most people in the community who have been involved realize that Dan had a tragic passing a week or so ago in a cyclist accident. He was a tremendous community-minded individual and gave his entire adult life to the betterment of this community and to so many worthwhile causes. As you have mentioned, he was really the founder of the tourist bureau, the Niagara Resort and Tourist Association, that is now the Niagara Falls Tourism. He was the first chairman for the Terry Fox. He was involved in the starting of Heart Niagara and so many other worthwhile organizations, and was constantly giving of his time and talents to worthwhile organizations in this community. As a result, I As a result, I was involved with the building of the fountain through the municipality at the corner of Bender Hill and Victoria Avenue several years ago, and the intent at that particular time was to dedicate that in the name of a worthwhile community person. That never materialized, and I would like to make a motion that the municipality erect a suitable plaque in honor of Mr. Daddio at that fountain in his name and because of his community efforts and community work, and a suitable ceremony be held similar to the one we're having for the Ricky family and one we had previously for Mr. Sam Alphieri many years ago, where we recognize the work of these special people in our community. So I would make the motion that we arrange that and see if the legacy and the work and the giving of Dan Daddio can continue on in the memory of the people in this community.
Thank you, Counselor. I have a second from Counselor Kerrio. Any further discussion? Having seen none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, motions carried. I think I had my support of that as well. Counselor Wing?
We're on a bit of a roll. I previously spoke with Counselor Thompson about recognizing the work of special people in our community, and one of them is Ruth Redmond. Before she died, there was a bit of a movement to have Bellevue Terrace, the little street on which she lived, renamed Redmond Heights, and Ruth was wholeheartedly in support, very pleased with the idea, but it didn't come about. I think now that we're memorializing a couple of other people, it's very timely to return to that proposal as well. And instead of just renaming Bellevue Terrace, on which nobody at all lives anymore, we should also name all the lands which Ruth gave to the city, Redmond Heights, in honor of her vision, her decades of effort in protecting the battlefield, buying up all those lands to save them and giving them to the city and the outstanding gift. So I move that that be done.
Okay, second to that motion, Counselor Anone. Any discussion?
Well, I had a discussion with Counselor Wing and lived through the days when Ruth was so instrumental in this community in acquiring the property and making sure that it was set aside in perpetuity, and I was going to second the motion, but just want to say I heartily concur, and probably this should have been done a long time ago.
Okay, and any further questions by members of council? Having seen none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, motions carried. Just to speak to the other issue as well, to note, we are erecting a plaque in front of the Oaks Inn on Sunday, September 27th, to acknowledge Matt and Olga Ricky. The Ricky family will be there that afternoon, so we invite members of the public and certainly members of council to join us. We'll have that date. I think the time is, I believe, 2:00 P.M., and we'll be there in front of the Oaks Inn. And thank you to Counselor Kerrio and members of staff who've been able to work with the family to accomplish this result. So thank you very much. Move on to communications and comments of the city clerk. We have our first item. The Niagara Falls Ministerial Office Fellowship has requested the week of September 27th to October 3rd, 2009, to be proclaimed as Week of Prayer in the city of Niagara Falls. Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Maves, once again, for your recommendation and approval. All those in favor, motions carried. We have a comment from the Recreation Committee with regard to motion regarding the Thorlstone Road extension. Yes, Counselor Anone?
I just have a question to that. I attended the public meeting that we held last week for the residents of Fourth Avenue, and I was having a discussion with Mr. Dulovic and Mr. Dred, and Mr. Dulovic, because the question has been asked, how did we get to this position where we're at the point where we have to do this? And I asked, you know, if the region was giving, and maybe through you to Mr. Dulovic, if the region was giving us their word that that road would be from Thorlstone to the community center, right up until recently, can we not go back on the region? Because if Mr. Cousins is verbally telling Mr. Dulovic, you're going to have it in time, you're going to have it in time, you're going to have it in time, as they've explained to us, I don't understand how there's not some recourse to go back on the region. Do we have that in writing from Mr. Cousins at any given time?
Do you want me to answer that? It was like, Mr. Dulovic, please.
Yeah, through your worship. This was noted to the region on several occasions. As a matter of fact, it's, I have some minutes. I looked up back when they're doing the environmental assessment process. This is November of 2008, and it talked about, at that time, they were talking about September 2010 for it being open, and the response from regional staff was the region intends to tender stage roadwork in late 2009, which is now, and for completion by September 2010. So I mean, they all along knew that they were to build this road in time for the opening of the arena. So I mean, it's right here in minutes of a meeting of November 2008, and before that, that was always talked about, the intent of when this road was to be opened.
And Mr. Mayor, maybe through you to Mr. Beeman, do we not have any legal recourse then to go to the region and for failing to provide an agreement they've agreed? It seems to me that somewhere somebody dropped the ball huge, and if we have it in writing from the region that it would be open for the community center, why don't we have any recourse to go back on the region? It doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, I'm not absolutely sure what Mr. Dulovic is reading from, but is this actual minutes of, has the actual regional council adopted this, Mr. Dulovic, or is this just...
Through your worship, this is an internal meeting that was held with our staff, regional
staff, and their consultant as they were going through the environmental assessment process for this project. And it's noted in these minutes. I know it was discussed numerous times verbally with regional staff as to when the opening of the arena was going to be, and it was always their intent, even before this date, that they would have the road constructed in time for the opening of the arena.
And I would like to elaborate if I can. Thank you, Mr. Beeman. I think we're getting on our way here, but I wanted to elaborate. This is a little more complex than you may understand. The matter was always presented to Mr. Cousins, and it was their intent to satisfy the time limits. We have the Ministry of Environment involved. We have a tenant involved who owns, actually, who's leased the land, who had an option to purchase the land but didn't exercise the option, but has leased this land and has an obligation to consent to this. But more importantly, we have the Ministry of the Environment that has to approve a process for the clearance of the lands from an environmental perspective. When we challenged Mr. Cousins and things are moving along until they weren't, the question was asked, and he explained that it got a little more complex and that the matter of the environmental concerns were more involved than anticipated. SciTech, since that time, we've had discussions with the MOE and SciTech. We have a consultant who's dealing with the MOE to see if he could expedite the matter. Mr. Schram, who's working with us on the construction of the arena, is speaking with MOE representatives, but also we've had a discussion with SciTech, and we've asked them to submit the site plan showing the road and where the road allowance is going to be, and the MOE then will deal with the process of how this is going to be dealt with in respect of their approval. They have, I believe, fourteen weeks from the date of submission to consider the approach. And so at this stage, we're in that interim period. We, I believe, when we set out to build the Gale Center, we didn't have a commitment from the region, and that came along afterwards on the extension. When that extension was approved, we did a Phase One and Phase Two environmental assessment, and the Phase One was agreed would go from Stanley Avenue to Fourth Avenue. Second phase was going to be from Fourth Avenue to the intersection. It was determined the intersection of Victoria and Bridge, which would be the next phase. We were able to get the project included, the first phase financing included in this year's budget, so the money is there, so it's not a budgetary issue. It's a matter between the MOE now and the process that has to take place, and I'm not sure if our C O wants to address it further, but he had discussions with the regional C O as well. We've had some discussion with some businesspeople along the way, and so we're still hopeful that this matter can still be expedited to try to accommodate. The money's in place, we just need the approval of the MOE as to the process, and then SciTech, actually SciTech had, the region suggested SciTech had slowed down the process, but there's a number of factors at play here because they have a tenant that they have to deal with who has to give consent as well. So Ken, would you like to elaborate further?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, as soon as staff at the city became aware of this issue, we certainly had several meetings to try to rectify it. What has happened with the actual road itself is that the process that the MOE embarks upon is that they, in order for the condition of site assessment to be done, they need finalized drawings, and I believe those drawings were just submitted by the region to SciTech probably within the last few weeks. So that's the first that they've seen the final configuration of the road. SciTech could not commence their work on that risk assessment until they had that final road alignment. So that process really didn't commence in earnest until just a few weeks ago, and that was at no fault of our staff or what we were doing here. Our assumption was that that process was carrying on. What our consultant is doing right now is he is having a meeting along with Mr. Dulovic to meet with the MOE to see if there's any way that these processes can be streamlined, because our fear is, is that on any future development on those lands, if this is the kind of delays we face, it's not going to be acceptable to anybody that wants to develop on those lands. So we hope there's a different process or a faster process that we can enter into so that we don't have a delay of twelve to eighteen months to do a risk assessment every time that a proposal comes before us, and that's what the process is right now, and that's the reason for the delay.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, Your Worship. And on July 13th of this year, the city council passed a resolution to the region asking them to expedite the process. And the process that I understand it right now is that the region has to go through a risk assessment, and then they have to get a record of site condition in order to be able to build the road. That's correct?
Right.
Okay, and can I just ask, I guess through you to Mr. Dulovic, when did they commence their risk assessment?
Mr. Dulovic?
Through your worship, SciTech is just now looking at commencing the risk assessment for the roadworks. As noted in the letter of July 31st from Mr. Cousins, you know, at that point, the risk assessments suspended, well, haven't even really started. You know, SciTech is the owner, is the one that's responsible for moving the risk assessment forward, but nothing was happening up until July 31st. It wasn't until that meeting in July that we started to get the process moving on the risk assessment and getting the parties together.
Okay, and we have a project manager for the new fourplex, and when did our project manager advise them that they needed a risk assessment done?
I know Mr. Schram did talk to regional staff, and he talked to the consultant also during the E A process, that, you know, going hand in hand with the E A, they also needed to commence the risk assessment for the project, just the same process that we used for the arena site that we had to go to. So they were telling, he was advising the region at the time that they needed to commence this risk assessment because of the time involved. You know, it can take twelve months if all goes well to get the risk assessment done and then get your record of site condition to allow you to actually construct what you want to construct out there.
And do you know when it was that he advised them?
I do know we were having conversations late last year on this matter, again, while the E A process was going. Unfortunately, I'd have to try to find out if we have any written correspondence to that effect, but I know there were numerous conversations on the matter by Mr. Schram to the region, explain to them, you know, the issues that are related to the risk assessment and to get the record of site condition because of what we had to go through in getting it for the Gale Center site.
So the risk assessment could have started around nine months ago, nine, ten months ago?
Yes, by that point, although they just finished off, they finalized the E A in the early part of this year, they finished their second PIC last summer, they were just refining it, so they did have an opportunity of, you know, they knew what they were going to be going ahead with, so they could have engaged SciTech at the time to get the process moving. But unfortunately, the process just didn't get moving last year. They had an opportunity, I think, in earnest, if they met with SciTech and the leases of the property, they could have gotten this process going earlier than they had.
Okay. I guess it's unfortunate that the risk assessment didn't start sooner because then they could have gotten their record of site condition. I do have a few more questions, though, from Mr. Dulovic. I hear people in the community talk about alternatives, and I wanted to go through all of them just so that we're clear as to why they can or cannot work, and I hear Palmer Park being thrown around as one. Would they be able to get a road in there? What are the pros and cons of doing so?
Mr. Dulovic?
Yes, through your worship, staff are looking at a number of options. Every time we come up with something, I call up Mr. Schram to see, you know, can we try this or try that, and he will talk to the MOE even though he knows what the answer is, but he talks to them anyhow. So, you know, staff have looked at Palmer Park. There's a number of issues there. First and foremost is the cost. We're estimating, you know, three to four hundred thousand dollars to construct a proper roadway, pave some lighting, make sure we don't have any drainage issues. We would take out a couple of ball diamonds in order to do it. Palmer Park isn't a nice rectangle if you can envision where the parking lot is. At the end of the parking lot, we don't own the land anymore, so you'd have to jog to the south as you're going east towards the arena site, which would then involve taking out two ball diamonds to construct this temporary driveway access into the arena. Then we'd also have to negotiate with O P G. As part of our meeting with the MOE this Friday, we'll find out if there's any environmental issues or concerns that the MOE may have if we go that route in looking at constructing a driveway through Palmer Park.
Okay, another alternative, Your Worship, that I've heard bantered around has been the old CN tracks. The pros and cons?
Yeah, no, that's the old CN rail line. The city doesn't own it. Again, there'd be a cost to construct a driveway into there. Haven't really looked at the cost there. We'd have to negotiate with CN. Would they look at a lease or would they insist upon selling the land? I know there's some lands further to the east along that CN rail line that are contaminated, so we haven't approached them yet, but we see some issues with there, and again, there's a cost associated with that.
Okay. What about the current driveway that's there, the SciTech driveway?
I've asked about that too, and the MOE says, no, that's a change of use, therefore you'd have to go do a risk assessment to get your record of site condition. Yeah, I looked somewhat physical at that too, and I said, are you sure? Mr. Schram went and talked to the MOE, and they said, yes, you do, and I'm going to try again this Friday to ask, so.
So we'd be farther behind the eight ball with that one?
It's the same timeline, so you're no further ahead in doing a driveway versus the roadway. If you're going to go through the risk assessment, you may as well go ahead and just do the roadway risk assessment.
Okay. Can you give the residents sort of a best and a worst-case timeline?
Some of the options, if all goes well, one of the things we discussed was while the risk assessment is going on, is finalize the design drawings for the first phase. The region has committed to the first phase of the project, which is doing the Thorlstone Road extension right up to the entrance of the new Gale Center. So if we do it concurrently, the design works so that in anticipation of getting the record of site condition, the region could then go and tender the project. So you're not losing any time. By doing it concurrently, you save some time, and if you're within a few weeks of getting a record of site condition, being able to construction, depending on weather and everything goes well, I mean, three or four months, you could have the road open. So, you know, you're talking fifteen to sixteen months in the best-case scenario from today. As I was telling people at the open house, you know, I was thinking more like two years from today when the road reopened, and I was giving it a little bit in case there are any appeals on the record of site conditions or there are any other issues that came up during that process. So I was saying up to two years.
Okay. And Your Worship, I know that the risk assessment is not within our jurisdiction, it's part of the region's jurisdiction, but are city staff doing anything proactively? I know you have a meeting coming up this Friday.
Yeah, we're, like I say, we're meeting with the local MOE office to see what we can do to expedite the process. I know SciTech is trying to, they've written a letter, and not just with the road, but if there's something to do on some of the other lands that are developable, as Mr. Todd mentioned, you know, there's some frustration on the part of the leaseholder as to marketing the site, you know, and having to have these full plans drawn up and then going through a risk assessment or record of site condition. It's a long process, and a lot of times when you have businesses that want to move on something, they don't want to wait twelve months on a maybe. They're interested in something real concrete, so, you know, SciTech's trying to get some flexibility into this record of site condition that they're going to be, the risk assessment and getting a record of site condition, not only for the road, but also for some other lands that are developable in that area.
Okay. Well, Your Worship, I know that there's other people that want to speak, and perhaps I'll wait to see what they say as well, but I think we should send a resolution to the region, letting them know that it would be proactive on their part to complete the design work for the extension that would go into the four pad, and perhaps they can have that and the tender ready so that when the record of site condition is completed, that that can go out immediately.
Okay, I'll ask you about that motion in a moment. Anybody else like to speak to this matter? Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, at the same time, is there anything we can do?
Yeah, at the same time, is there anything we can do through our Member of Parliament, through the Ministry of Environment, to help them realize the concern with respect to this? And if there's any way that even through the ministry that this could be expedited? My question initially was going to be regarding the cost, if it was a cost factor, there's ways of certainly overcoming that by deleting one project or another. But both the region and everybody seem to have the financial aspect in order, that's not a problem. So I guess the only other thing we can do is try to work through your office to try to expedite it as much as we can.
We appreciate your concern. We had the same concern as well. We actually decided that it would probably be Mr. Schram's position. He does this work all the time, be best person to approach them. We wanted to engage, it was a process that the MOE has already in place. But Mr. Todd, do you have any comments you'd like to make with respect to that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. You've already heard that we have a meeting set up for this Friday, and I think if that's not successful, the next step would be to probably take it to the ministry level in Toronto. Perhaps at that point, we could get our Member of Parliament involved. We've already had some discussions with the consultant that that may need to happen. So I'd suggest that would be the next course of action.
Counselor, do you want to make your motion then, please?
Sure, Your Worship. I'd like to send a resolution on to the region, asking them to complete final drawings for the extension of Thorpe Stone Road and prepare the tender so that when we're close to, or when they are close to receiving their record of site condition, they can release the tender so as to eliminate any delay once the record of site condition is completed.
Moved by yourself, and seconded by Counselor Diodati. Any further comment? Call the vote, all those in favor. Motion is carried, Janice. Thank you very much. Also then, a motion to receive this matter from the Recreation Committee, moved by Counselor Diodati, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Any comments further? Yeah, sorry, okay. All those in favor. Motion is carried. Thank you. Next item is the Royal Canadian Legion's request that September 20th to September 26th be proclaimed as Legion Week in the city of Niagara Falls, moved by Counselor Fisher, seconded by Counselor Maves. Any further discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor. Motion is carried. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional items for council's consideration?
Just with regard to that last item, another clarification, the flag raising, which should also approve is for next Monday, not, it wasn't today, it's for a week from today. So probably a motion to just approve the flag raising as well.
Okay, a motion to approve the flag raising next week, moved by Counselor Fisher, again, seconded by Counselor Maves. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Move on to the reports process, 2010 budget. Our CAO is going to make a presentation this evening with regard to the city of Niagara Falls 2010 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of tonight's report is to present to you what we envision as being the 2010 budget process, and we have recommendations here tonight for council's approval. And as we started to develop the 2010 budget process, we wanted to deliver a process that ensured that both the mission statement that you see on the screen before you tonight, and more importantly, council's strategic priorities were encapsulated in the process that we're presenting to you. Outline on the next slide, you'll see what that process is. And if you look on the left upper corner, you see the process starting with council's strategic priorities. And the process that we're suggesting here is a cyclical one, and it's one that we believe we can use on an ongoing basis in the future by following the process and keeping in mind what those council's strategic priorities are. And in keeping with that, council's strategic priorities that were adopted for this council are before you, and they are to establish infrastructure investment priorities, develop and implement a comprehensive transportation plan, move forward with an arena complex development, strengthen and promote economic development within the city, implement recommendations in support of parks and recreation and the arts and the master culture plan, identify and evaluate alternative sources of revenue, and to continue to monitor and improve the efficiency of the organization. The process that we've set out for you is to, first off, we felt it was important, and this is in all of your documentation, and I'm not going to go through it in detail, but we felt it was important for you to understand the accomplishments for this year in 2009. And those accomplishments in your report have been aligned with council's strategic priorities. So we've let you know what staff has been working on that meet your priorities, that you have determined for this term of council. The next thing that we've done is we've asked all of our departmental directors and executive directors to come up with a 2010 set of corporate goals. These are the items that we believe we want to accomplish during the 2010 calendar year and are hoping to incorporate these items into the 2010 budget. Again, all of these are aligned to our corporate strategic priorities, and those are outlined in detail in the report. In facing the 2010 budget, I assume we all know it's going to be a very, very difficult budget year. And in order for us to focus the process, we wanted to ensure that those council's strategic priorities were delivered effectively and efficiently. There are a number of budget opportunities that we see as positives, and those are on the screen in front of you. We were fortunate in attracting a number of infrastructure stimulus funding projects, Build Canada, the RINK funding for a number of recreational programs, JEP programming, and the Community Adjustment Fund. Those are going to allow us in 2010 to complete a number of projects that we may not have otherwise been able to do without that funding, where we're getting two-thirds funding from other levels of government. We were able and fortunate, we just had a report tonight to council telling us how successful we were in marketing some of our surplus properties, and that certainly will help us going forward into 2010. We have, because of the downturn in economy, we have been able to see an increased value for our money on contracted projects. We have the Niagara Convention Center and Civic Center going forward. We're hoping that with its completion coming in 2011, that that will foster not only increased economic activity in the construction phase, but also have economic activity in years to come. The Gale Center will open next year, and again, we're hoping that that will spur on additional economic activity with additional revenue opportunities with ICE Reynolds, as well as attracting provincial-wide tournaments and other events to the center. Downtown redevelopment has been very successful during this year, and we're hoping that that continues next year. We're hoping that with some of the investment that council has committed to, and we still have an opportunity for additional infrastructure stimulus funding, that we'll see additional openings of stores and some residential development, which will result in additional tax revenue in the downtown area. We're very cognizant of user fees, and one of council's strategic priorities is to look at user fees and increase the opportunity to take reliance off of the tax base and have user fees instead. And we always continue to look at operational improvements and efficiencies. Those are some of the budget challenges.
Counselor Iannone?
Thank you. Through you to Mr. Todd. We've often had the discussion here when we have budget coming. We get the budget, tells us how much you need, we tell you to cut, we come back, we do it four or five times, then we pass the budget. I think it's Counselor Cario who's said a number of times, look, if we passed $92 million last year, and this year we're going to only spend $94 million, bring us back something that fits into $94 million, don't bring us back $102 million, and have us start to cut. Wouldn't it make sense to say, we want to spend X amount, bring us back projects that will fit in that X amount, instead of the back and forth kind of process we've done up to date?
If I may, I probably will get to that point, and if you could jump in there, I think I might help explain what the approach that we're going to be looking at for this year would be. But it does tie in with some of the thinking on that, Counselor, it definitely does. On the screen, some of the challenges that we're facing for 2010. We are going to be facing about a $6 million gap in revenue and expenditures coming out of last year's budget. And council will recall last year that we did receive about $4 million in a one-time grant that was investing in Ontario. Unfortunately, we're not going to be getting that this year. So right off the bat, that leaves us approximately $4 million shortfall of that funding because that was one-time funding. Other budgetary pressures that we're going to be facing are some revenue shortages, we have inflationary increases that everybody faces, and we have fixed operating commitments, and we talked about some of those earlier in tonight's session. We are going to be looking at the outcome of some long-term debt as a result of some major capital infrastructure projects, and those will be coming on in the next year or two. We have inflation. Over the last number of years, the city of Niagara Falls has had budgets that have been below the rate of inflation, and that has set up a situation where we now have some revenue shortfalls because some of the spending hasn't kept up with the, or has exceeded what some of the budget increases have been. We're facing fluctuating revenues. Some of our revenues in the building area, for example, because of some of the decline in building activity have been off. We've now just recently approved our development charges, but it's going to take some time for us to replenish some of the reserves that are there. Council is aware that we have an aging infrastructure. We are also constantly faced with expanded municipal responsibilities and legislative requirements. Some of those come out in such as pandemic planning, where with some of the H1N1 flu and issues like that, that we have to potentially budget for impacts that we're faced with those issues. We have accessibility issues that are coming down through the Ontario Disabilities Act that the council and the municipality have to adhere to. We're in the last year of a agreement with the Niagara Parks Commission where we had an agreement for payment in lieu of taxes, and that will have to be renegotiated. We're going to have continued demand for funding on our permissive grants to all of our funding agencies and groups, and there'll always be continued pressure for new services or increasing existing services. One of the things that we're going to try to push forward earlier this year is our capital budget approvals, because we find the later we go in the year, we don't get as good a contract price on those. The earlier in the year that you get out with approvals, it seems the better prices we get. And as we outlined earlier tonight to council, we have certain labor costs that are fixed and will be part of the 2010 budget. Having said that, what we've done as a staff, we've developed budget guidelines for you for 2010, and perhaps this ties partly in with what Counselor Iannone's earlier question was. We're recommending here is that, first off, that we freeze the majority of the budgets at 2009 levels. Secondly, we look at continuing council's strategic priorities by trying to maximize non-taxation revenues, that would be, by the way, of user fees. We're going to be evaluating staff, vacant staff positions prior to recruitment. We're going to go through a process where we would look at all vacancies prior to filling them, and the directors will have to provide justification for filling of those vacancies. We're looking at reducing specific budgets below 2009 levels, and those will be detailed and greater, will be provided in greater detail to the directors. We're also looking at stronger evaluation processes, and this would happen before it gets to council. The process that we've set up would be that all of the directors and executive directors will be meeting with the treasurer and corporate services executive director and looking at paring down their budgets. There'll be a second meeting that'll take place with myself and the executive directors and the treasurers to pare it down further, so that we're hoping by the time it gets to you, the budget will be in reasonable shape prior to council having to enact any further reductions. What we are going to do, though, in the process is that anything that we feel cannot make our cut, we are going to provide a list to you as a council so that you know what we've specifically taken out. And if council isn't in agreement with that, you then would have the opportunity to put that project back. And again, that would be in keeping with your strategic priorities. We are going to look at limiting increases only to those pre-existing commitments that we have, some of those, for example, with some of our existing labor contracts that we don't have any control over because they're already fixed for the 2010 period. And the other thing that staff is working on right now is the development of a consistent application process for our community groups and agencies, and that would be a reporting process where we would get consistent information as a council. And in a nutshell, we're going to be asking those agencies to provide us information on what is the community getting for the dollars that we're giving you? What is the return on investment for this community? We want to find out that if we're giving a certain agency money, that the community is going to benefit from that, and it's a good return on our investment. So staff is working on that as a consistent application process that will be put forward to council. We're also looking at some improvements to the process. We're trying to have the budget timelines move up earlier. We're looking at the budget prioritization, as I've already outlined to you with senior staff, prior to that budget becoming to you. Finance staff and the treasurer is looking at some reformatting to make the budget format a little bit more presentable and better communications to a for you. We are also looking at including a public participation, public involvement in this. Part of that will include a survey, online survey, that we hope to have up with approval of council tonight, hopefully by the end of the week. We're also looking at two public meetings that we would be conducting through the month of October to receive public input. And we're also looking at doing some random telephone solicitation to just ask questions of the public to find out what they're thinking about in terms of the process as well. One of the things that we're suggesting in order to bring the process forward in a more timely fashion is for council to meet on off council Monday evenings. We're suggesting that that may take place on off meetings for a fixed period of time. We would take a three-hour time slot, perhaps starting at four or five o'clock, going to seven or eight o'clock, ending it at eight o'clock or seven o'clock, whatever time we pick. That way, you're not getting bogged down in a regular council night, trying to comprehend not only all the items before you tonight at a budget session, but being able to strictly focus on the task before us, and that would strictly be dealing with the budget. And we think we can get through it in a more timely fashion and get council focused on that specific task. We're hoping that if we follow some of these recommendations, we'd be able to have the budget finished sometime in February. What we would be presenting the schedules in front of you, but what we'd also like to do is have a couple of nights where all the departmental directors or executive directors would present their detailed budgets to you, where you would be able to have a chance to question that director or executive director on their budget specifically. And we feel then that there can be a lot of dialogue with council and give you a much better feel for what is included in their specific departmental budgets. Then we'd have a couple of meetings early in the new year that council could get into the nitty-gritty of actually looking at and looking at what cuts or further reductions we may need to make, with hopefully that we'd have a final budget presentation sometime in February, tentatively slating that for February 22nd. Intermixed with this, we would like to push forward some of our capital and water and sewer budgets, utility budgets, that could come forward at the same time, and hopefully we can be tying things up much quicker and much earlier in the year. So, Mr. Mayor, our specific recommendations are that we endorse the process that we've outlined to you tonight, that council formally adopt the guidelines that we presented, and that we adopt the budget format process as well. So, Mr. Mayor, that's the report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Todd. Are there any questions of our CAO? Okay, having seen, sorry, Counselor Thompson?
Yes. Usually when we got into this in the past, and I like moving up the timeline, I would hope that it could have been before the end of the year, so we could start out the year with a financial plan that would, as you suggested, give us the opportunity to follow a financial plan from the first of the year. Are we anywhere in a position where we can evaluate where we stand with the 2009 budget? I know at some points, we used to look at the budget and say, well, we better put on the brakes a little bit or evaluate what we're spending to make sure we come up with at least a minimal surplus for the end of the year rather than getting into a deficit. Is it time to suggest that to some of the staff to make sure we're in a good position at the start of the year?
Okay, Mr.?
That's already been done?
Yes, that is happening already. So, okay. So we do have a request on the recommendations to approve, yes, to approve the dates and the process. So moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Iannone. All those in favor? Motion is carried, so we'll look forward to that commitment in terms of time. We appreciate that Mr. Todd has actually grasped the reins in a very efficient way and is on top of the financial situation. I'm not sure when the last day we have for closing out the 2009 budget occurs. I'd like to ask that question, if I could, to Mr. Burden or Mr. Harrison. In terms of trying to get the year-end wrapped up... In terms of trying to get the year-end wrapped up, does that impact on our 2010 budget with respect to closing out '09?
The end-of-year results usually take after you take in the year-end work, is probably mid-February that we would have a real close handle on. You know, certainly from a revenue standpoint, we would have everything in, but from an expenditure standpoint, companies do send invoices in January that relate to December activities, so it's generally about a six-to-eight-week turnaround time to have something done. But we can forecast, we've been working, looking at our operations thus far, and we've been, there is going to be a report that comes forth on the 28th that says what we've done year-to-date, and so that's where we're at.
Can you tell us when the earliest date would be, that you could give us a result of any surpluses that may exist, if there are any, any departments, when that date might be?
Once again, Mr. Mayor, I believe that probably we would be able to ascertain by mid-February exactly the position. We would have a pretty good idea on the revenue side early in January, but any of the expenditures. I know that all the directors are more heightened to getting this type of work done sooner, and hopefully we would have it sooner than the middle of February, but to give ourselves time for some laggards that may be out there, that would be certainly the time I would anticipate.
Thank you. Councillor Iannone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And last year, when we put the agencies that come to us for grants, and we put them on notice after they submitted an increase that we needed them to slash, I mean, we already know we're $6 million in a deficit now, so we should be giving those agencies pre-warning that don't come to us with anything other than a 0% increase. Actually, I thought that's what freezing the majority of budgets at the 2009 level meant.
Mr. Todd, as a response, were you there?
Thank you, Councillor. The guidelines that you've approved tonight and show that freezing, that will be conveyed to all groups. So the expectation is coming in is that from all of those groups, we're going to be expecting that or perhaps less. But that's what the guideline says, and that guideline will be communicated to all of them.
Thank you, because I know that some of the groups, it was a shock to have us take them back to their prior amounts before that, and I don't want them to think, having any misconceptions that at any point we'd be looking at increases to anybody's budget while we're sitting in this type of deficit.
Thank you. Councillor DiDati?
I just have one other comment, too, in regard to the questionnaire, the citizen survey at the back. Just a suggestion, I thought, well, you've got this on page 36, you've got the scenario that best describes your recommended solution to the problem. Just a suggestion, adding another column that has what each scenario would represent to the average household in terms of dollars.
Okay. In terms of what would impact per household?
Yes, because I think the average person, 3%, that might not mean a lot to them, but they can quantify it if you could put it in a dollar, just a suggestion.
I think that's, I think that's probably something we could come up with is a dollar amount there in that column, certain?
Yeah, per whatever.
Per household, or that increase would mean per household, certainly.
Something like that, and one other.
Are we going to take the average, the average value of?
Yeah. Are we still using the numbers from the 50s, or are we?
No.
I think, Councillor, we could, we could come up with something to put in there.
Okay. And then one other suggestion was when we are breaking down departments, again, just a suggestion, maybe if we had something of a pie chart representing where the money goes in the city? Because I don't think the average person maybe, and I don't know if they understand, I don't think they really, because somebody says, why do you spend money here? Why don't you spend money there? And I don't think they accurately understand.
So you were listening in on our meetings, right? Because we actually have two pie charts that are, that are just waiting to be delivered to the public.
Oh, great.
One is not only where we spend the money, it's what we think is a really big misconception about where that total tax bill goes, because our portion is only, you know, 20, 20-some-odd cents on the dollar, and I'm not sure that our residents really realize that. So there'll be two. There'll be one showing what our piece of the pie is, but then there'll be another one that'll show how we spend our pie. Okay?
Okay, that's good. Good point. Thank you very much, Mr. Todd, I appreciate the effort. Again, we'll move on then to ratification of Community Services Committee actions. I'll call on the Chair, Councillor Iannone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The following items are to be ratified from tonight's meeting of the Community Services Committee. The minutes of August 10th, 2009, meeting be approved. Under reports, PD 2009 70, Forest-Glen Drive parking restrictions and St. Vincent de Paul Catholic School site plan agreement, one that no-stopping for the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. from Monday to Friday excluding holidays from September to June be approved, that a letter be sent to the principal of St. Vincent de Paul and suggest that the school send a memo to the students' parents encouraging them to use the kiss-and-ride drop-off area along Kayla Road, that Mr. Iwut Koy, I'm probably not pronouncing that properly, be sent a copy of the staff report and invited to attend the Community Services meeting. Under TS 2009 32, Trans-Cab Transportation Pilot Project, that a six-month pilot project be established to determine the long-term feasibility of a trans-cab transportation program in the Montrose Road business corridor. TS 2009 33, Queen Street at Ontario Avenue Intersection Control Review, one that the existing metered parking space on the south side of Queen Street immediately to the west of Ontario Avenue be removed, that a no-stopping zone be installed on the south side of Queen Street between Ontario Avenue and a .46 meters west of Ontario Avenue, that the sidewalk on the south side of Queen Street be extended to the edge of the traffic lane and referred to the 2010 Capital Works budget for inclusion, that the sidewalk cafes be prohibited on, that sidewalk cafes be prohibited on the south side of Queen Street between Ontario Avenue and a .25 meters west of Ontario. Under TS 2009 36, Harvard Avenue at Wilshire Boulevard Intersection Control Review, that a stop sign be installed facing northbound motorists on Harvard Avenue at Wilshire Boulevard. Under TL 2009 36, McLeod Road Cost Sharing, that the city enter an agreement with Oakwood Place Shopping Centre Limited, Canadian Tire Real Estate Limited, McLeod Square Incorporated, Cookshire Developments Incorporated, Hamburg Honda Corporation Scout Group, Scott Group of Companies, Inc., the TDL Group Corp., and the Regional Municipality of Niagara for the funding of road improvements at the McLeod Road and Queen Elizabeth Way interchange, that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute such agreement with a revised Schedule B and the affected properties be notified, and I so move.
Moved by Councillor Iannone, seconded by Councillor Peter Angelo. Any further comments or questions? Having seen none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. I'd like to call on the Chair of Corporate Services Committee, Councillor Peter Angelo.
Thank you, Worship. The following items are to be ratified from tonight's meeting. First, that the minutes of July 20th, 2009, be adopted as recorded. Under reports, we had L 2009 43 dealing with the Green Oaks Mobile Home Park. It was recommended that the report be deferred to the next Corporate Services Committee meeting, and that staff report back with regard to the people need housing document. Next report was L 2009 39 dealing with the city sale of auction lands, and it was recommended that council receive the report for information purposes. The next report, L 2009 36, dealt with the McLeod Road Cost Sharing Agreement, and it was recommended that the report be deferred to the Community Services Committee agenda, and you already heard Councillor Iannone approve that. And the last report we dealt with was HR 2009 05 dealing with the corporate pandemic plan. It was recommended that council receive the information and approve the policy 400.39, Human Resource Practices During a Pandemic or Emergency, and 400.40, Working From Home During a Pandemic Along With Corporate Business Continuity Pandemic Plan. Under New Business, Worship, it was recommended that staff report back on the investigations into reassessing of marine land, and I would so move the report.
Moved by Councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councillor DiDati. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. Move on to ratification and camera recommendations. I'll call on the Clerk, please.
A few items, Your Worship, that the city investigates servicing of lands described as parts 1, 2, 3, and 4 on Plan 59R-13660, Swayze Drive, and report back to council with the results and possible methods of sale. And related to that item, that council not pursue legal action against Mr. Yegar. And with regard to Casino Assessment Appeal, that HVS Consulting and Valuation Division of M&amp;R Valuation Services, Inc., be engaged to perform an appraisal review for, of the property assessments for Casino Niagara and the Niagara Falls View Casino Resort.
Okay, moved by Councillor Iannone, seconded by Councillor Peter Angelo. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Remember, the council will move on to the consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda and hold by Councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councillor DiDati. I note the conflicts of Councillor Wing, Councillor Iannone, and Councillor Thompson for item PD 2009-66. All those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Clerk, are there additional bylaws at this time?
There's no additional bylaws, but for a couple of them, revised agreements were given to you in your handouts, and as well, the agreement related to McLeod Road was distributed in committee downstairs.
Thank you. And can I have a motion to use the bylaws? Bylaws to be given a first reading. Moved by Councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councillor DiDati. I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Beeman.
With respect to bylaw 2009-148, the McLeod Road agreement.
Yes.
During, one of the other things that changed at the last minute is that the Pineville-Tara Homes Limited is standing in for TDL to bear the actual owner of that land.
Yes.
It's actually TDL that's going to put up the money, but the other developers wanted the landowner to decide, so the landowner is Pineville-Tara Homes Limited, that is the Culinary family.
Yes, thank you.
That's all the briefing called about this.
All right. Appreciate the qualification, thank you very much. So council's heard the motion, all those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you.
Bylaws 2009-145 to 2009-149, read a first time.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to give the bylaws a second and third reading? Moved by Councillor Peter Angelo, seconded again by Councillor DiDati. Once again, council's heard the motion, all those in favor? Motion is carried.
Bylaws 2009-145 to 2009-149, read a second and third time, and fast.
Thank you. New business, Councillor Iannone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The front page of today's newspaper, Few More Doctors Quit Our ER. The story's getting worse and worse as we go along. Councillor DiDati, I'm sure will talk about a letter he has submitted to us from the Emerge doctors, but as you read here from Dr. Dubrovsky, who's an actual ER doc in there, things are going to hell in a handbasket at the NHS, and particularly in our GNGH site, and quite frankly, I can't see there being any increase in patient care. There were some statistics that were handed to us in our additions to council in regards to the way that the NHS is spending hospital money, and I think one of the most alarming ones in one of the paragraph is, over the last one and a half years, the NHS has kept a private-for-profit physician temporary agency on retainer at a cost of $20,000 per month. If I'm doing my math right, and Councillor Peter Angelo will tell me whether I am, it's $360,000 for a year and a half. That's a lot of nurses that you could have put back on staff in the Emerge to help increase wait times. Dr. Dubrovsky also highlighted that the emergency physicians in Niagara Falls have long ties to the community and have served the community with pride. It also highlights that we had some of the best wait times in an Emerge in the entire Niagara region. I think it boggles my mind to have outside people tell our doctors, who are working in our Emerge, how things are in there, when our doctors are telling the politicians, the public, and anybody else they can get to listen, short of the NHS and the LIN, that things are not going well in there. And I do not believe that having med, what are they called, meta docs?
Meta Emerge.
Meta Emerge docs that come in here with no ties to the community, that are just there to make a buck, is the right way for our community to go. And I also want to highlight to council that I did attend AMO along with the mayor and Mr. Todd, and Mr. Hudak had an opportunity to address all the AMO delegates in regards to being the new leader of the opposition, and we got an opportunity to ask questions. It's far be it to me to lose an opportunity like that, so I did ask Mr. Hudak, if you become premier, will you, because of the problems in your community, the loss of your hospitals, H, the ruining of our hospital in Fort Colborne, will you go in and get rid of the LINs and put hospital, local hospital boards back in charge of running the local hospitals, and give it back to people who are and/or appointed by councils or elected? And he gave the perfect political answer. He said, well, if I become premier, I will refer it to my health critic, and I will have them bring back a rapport. And I said, well, that's not what I asked you. I was looking for a more yes-or-no answer, and are you prepared to do that? And his answer was, once again, I will refer it to a committee or my health critic and have them report back to me. And quite frankly, that's the same government that created the NHS anyway, so I'm just thinking, I can't see for us anybody on the horizon who's willing to come forward and say, for your, outside of our MPP, for your residents and for the community, we're going to stop and listen to our doctors. And I just want our doctors to know that this council's listening to you. There's a dozen resolutions that have gone to our MPP, our Minister of Health, who is not listening. We've tried to get meetings with every minister locally or anybody that can help us, even in regards to the untold transportation costs. We can't get them. So I understand how the docs are very frustrated, and I just have to tell the residents, you got to keep calling the premier, you got to keep calling the Minister of Health, send your emails, because right now, even we can't get results. And I think it's getting more and more terrifying, not just for moms and kids now who are not going to get care at GNGH, but for people who are using our Emerge, because the people inside are telling us it's not working.
Councillor DiDati?
Thank you, Worship, and I echo the sentiments of Councillor Iannone, and I understand that right now, that MPP crater is working with Ministry of Health to try to rectify this, because the current solution on the table is definitely not good for Niagara. It's not good for anybody. And it's a sad day when we chase away the doctors of the best ER department in the region. Anyway, Your Worship, on another point, I was just kind of curious, I happened to notice this picture, I'm sure you must have seen this picture, too, Your Worship. You were standing next to this Brazilian, what are they called, mambo girl, and I just wondered, the headline says, Feel the Heat, and someone had told me that her name was Heat. Is there any truth to that, Your Worship? But I just wanted to mention that, it was a very lovely picture, and thank you for...
Yes, Councillor, that was in the recognition of the Brazilian Independence Day, and we couldn't figure out the relative, I guess, relationship between the mamba dancers and the Independence Day either, so I was, I should have had a puzzled look on my face with this one.
Actually, Your Worship, it was far from puzzled.
Councillor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, Your Worship, and one of the organizers of the annual man-a-mile relay race had asked me to just let council know when the event was happening and extend an invitation to all of council. I know you've been out to many man-a-mile races, I know Councillor Thompson has been out to many man-a-mile races. I'm not sure if you actually competed, and I know they started in 1922. Were you competing back then?
The video was effectively involved.
I know, I know he was. And, Your Worship, once again, the event is going to be held on October 12th, so, which is Thanksgiving, so perhaps I can pass this invitation over to you, and then you can let members of council know via email that the event is taking place, and hopefully people can make it up. The only other item I had, Your Worship, was a question, and I know bylaw 146 tonight talked about the Infrastructure Stimulus Fund, and that we are moving forward with the Drummond Road reconstruction, which I'm very pleased to see, and that's going to begin on October 1st of this year. Your Worship, a couple of the other projects that we have in the queue, we have the Boys and Girls Club, the downtown, Destin Slater Avenues. Is there another project? Was there another one submitted?
Boys and, downtown, Boys and Girls Club, museum, yes, the second, third phase of museum.
Walkway over?
Yes, that's right, second, third.
Your Worship, do we have any update on where any of those four projects stand?
Mr. Todd?
Well, few, Mr. Mayor, there, we haven't heard anything firm. We know there, for example, the downtown application, we know is still under active consideration. A couple of the other ones are under the not-for-profit stream, and they are a different source or a different pot of money, so the Boys and Girls Club and the museum are being funded through that not-for-profit. Right now, they're in the process, what we're hearing is that with all, you know, the uncertainty right now with potential election, that there's not any announcements that we're hearing right now. We're hoping that doesn't hold things up, and we're hoping that some of the announcements can come out as quickly as possible, but my understanding is that a lot of them are sitting there almost ready to go, but some of the uncertainty surrounding a potential federal election may hold some of that up.
Your Worship, though, isn't the money already committed? I mean, why would a federal election sort of stop them from?
Well, I think the fund has been established, Councillor, but I think our cutoff date was August 18th, is that correct?
Yes.
And the submission date was August 18th, and we're waiting on evaluation. We did make some comments to various ministers at AMO, asking for consideration in what's happening, but it's between the federal and provincial governments, but they have this large fund established still, and we are just waiting to hear from, the MPP and certainly the MP have both been requested, just to say how we're making out, but we haven't had any word from either office at this point, so. any word from either office at this point, so.
I just want to give out the checks during the lunch.
Okay. Anything else? Motion adjourned. Councillor Carrion, Councillor May, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you very much, members of council.